Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Washington County Board of Commissioners and thank you for being here today. We would like to excuse Commissioner Snow, he is not here, he's on county business elsewhere. As we start today's meeting, we're honored and blessed to have Pastor Greg Wright from the West Side Baptist Church here to give us our invocation as we start our meeting. I want to thank Pastor Wright for being here. He's a part of the interfaith council and he always does such an amazing job. After that, our own David Kraus from our Washington County Sheriff's Office will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Father, I'm going to read Psalm 119, verse 156, says, "Your compassion, Lord, is great. Preserve my life according to your laws." There's two things important there. One is God's compassion towards us. Secondly is the acknowledgement that law and order actually is good for us. So we're supposed to start with the law of God and the word of God, but county law has an effect of being good for us. So do you want to pray?
Thank you.
Father, we thank you that you are compassionate, gracious to us. We live in a place that reflects your goodness. We thank you that we have government leaders that are interested in well-being of our community. We thank you for the safety and peace that you enjoy. We pray that through legislation and ordinance that you continue to provide a place of peace and safety to the people of our county who's blessed in this meeting in particular, that you can be glorified in it, that this county can be blessed by it, and blessed as all.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one union, under God, and visible with their original justice for all.
Thank you very much, both of you. At the beginning of our meeting, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting. The consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than a request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is not debatable.
Mr. Chair, my motion includes the following items. Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment from May 7, 2025, through June 3, 2025. Item B, consideration of commission meeting minutes of May 6, 2025. Item C, consideration of special committee minutes of May 13, 2025. D, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. E, consideration of administrative adjustments for personal property. F, consideration of proof of publication of ordinances 2025-1289-0, 2025-1290-0, 2025-1291-0, and 2025-1292-0, published on Wednesday, May 14, 2025. Item G, consideration of authorization of execution of the Glen Cove Estates Phase Two final platte. Item H, consideration of authorization of execution of the Carter subdivision final platte. I, consideration of authorization of execution of the amended Gardner Lakeview Heights subdivision platte. J, consideration of authorization of execution of the amended Pine Valley Mountain Farm subdivision platte. K, consideration of resi contract amendment. L, consideration of Greater Zion co-funding project letter of support. Item M, consideration of renewal of bailiff agreement for the Fifth District Court. And N, consideration of applications for property tax abatement, of which there were two. That's my motion.
Very good. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. You know, I regret, one of these days I would like our consent agenda to get all the way to Z. You know, you only got to N there. So that was a good run, Commissioner. Appreciate it. So our next item, our first item is our purchase request, and we have Ray Boyer.
The first one is a ratification. This is for, it's a combination, well, this is for the auditor's, for auditor's office. It's to add new workstations. We've rented a room already. The first one, the cost includes design fee, delivery, install, and standard fees. And this is on a state contract for $14,124.27. The end of the purchase requisitions, the first one is for the fair. This was for a 48-page official fair book. This is for 10,000 printed and shipped. It also includes graphic design and freight. And a 32-page mini-book, 5,000 printed and shipped, shipped with graphic design and freight for those, for a total of $15,875.91. The next one is hotel rooms for the fair. This includes hotel rooms for royal staff, concert staff, general fare, entertainment, everything. Everybody that acquired a hotel room and lodging in the contract. This is for $17,078.35. The next one is, this was for ribbons, prizes, promo items for the fair, for a total of $38,862.62. The next one is for the library. This is for 44 HP Pro Mini meters to replace some of the older ones. This is for $33,451.88, and this is for a grand unit. The next one is for the shooting sports park. We are reimbursing the purgatory play facility club for some custom fencing that they needed. They are paying a portion. Our portion is $16,905. That is what was budgeted for this year. The next one is for tourism. This is for LPG production video, for $13,968. The next one is for ladies' park. This is for some stripping shoes and breaking shoes. It comes with different panels and everything you need to conduct those and rearranging them for events. This is for $13,141.51. The next one is for color works. This is to reimburse Island City for old Highway 91 project for $71,120. I found out that this actually came in under budget, for Island City's, they're probably paying less than $2. The next one is for dental maintenance. This was a last-minute change, so I hope we got the, we're able to review the information. This is to replace a 10-ton HVAC unit at the jail. The cost included a harmonizer. Our maintenance staff will install this. It's $14,591.18, which was below the original cost of the back. The next one is for road, the roads department. This is for one of the strip road bases for the enterprise area that we're going to reach up this year. If human extra cost of wasn't, given a budget for it, it just came out more than what was expected for that area. This is an additional $25,000 from the previous requisition we did. The next one is also for roads associated with one of the strip road bases. This is for a different project in the metal values subdivision of Pine Valley. This is $45,200. The next one is for the sheriff's office. This is for some staff lockers, amendments, and for the bathrooms, and part of the remodel as well. This is $46,532.46, sorry. And then the next one is also for the sheriff's office. This is for two new Ford F-150 patrol trucks at $47,849 each, trading in one Ford F-150 for $26,500, which brings our total of $60,198. And then the final one, this is a combination of the auditor's office, recorder's office, and the library. We're removing high-density shelving from the mobile storage in the auditor's office and recorder's office, and moving them to the library. This is a total of $33,300.
Motion to approve the ratification for PO number 44, and then all the other purchase requests as read by Ray.
We have a motion, and I will second that motion to approve the purchase request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Ray. That was quite a list there. So I noticed the new format. Is that because of our new program we have? Excellent. So, looks good. Looks sharp.
No money left.
Yep. Yeah, so, okay, our next item is, our next item is a consideration of ordinance number 2025-1293-0, an ordinance amending Washington County Code, Chapter 14, in order to define and designate the boundaries of election precincts in Washington County, State of Utah, and comply with state law regarding voter totals. Jenna, it's good to see you.
So the point of the proposal is to simplify our existing ordinance. Right now, we have laws and regulations, everything is, and as we continue to add, we're simply going to make those laws applicable. So this would be always the favorite of the map definitions.
You know, that's a good idea. Did you come up with that idea, or did Victoria? Some brilliant person came up with that, because people only look at the maps anyway.
It was Jenna's idea. She gets full credit. But other jurisdictions do this, and it's a very good idea. The quasi-legals are just impossible to keep up with.
Yeah. Well, very good.
Mr. Chair, make a motion when you pass item two, as explained by Jenna.
Very good. We have a motion. I'll second that motion to pass item two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our next item is consideration of ordinance 2025-1294-0, an ordinance amending Washington County ordinance Title 8, Chapter 5, regarding transient room tax. And I have Victoria hell down for this.
Yes, Commissioners, this is a new state law. It allows an increase in the transient room tax rate from 4.25% to 4.5%. It would allow, the earliest we could impose this under state law would be October 1st. However, I understand that there are policy reasons possibly to postpone the effective date of this particular item. And so, in the packet, the current ordinance would make it effective October 1st, and the proposal would be to change that to July 1, 2026.
So Victoria, and I spoke with Commissioner Almquist about this, but in speaking with some of our hoteliers, next year, 2026, is really just better for them. People have reservations. There, you know, there would have to be changes. And so, in order to make it work better for them, July 1, 2026 would be my recommendation, we move that to, so.
I was able to speak with Tourism Director Brittany McMichael, and she also thought that would be a good change. Because our current packet has the wrong date, I propose that I substitute the proposed ordinance and the proposed changes to Title 8, Chapter 5, to that new effective date, and have you sign the new ordinance reflecting that new date.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item number three, consideration of ordinance number 2025-1294-0, respecting the amending Washington County ordinance Title 8, Chapter 5, regarding transient room tax.
Very good. With the date that we've mentioned of July 1, 2026.
For our first, 2026.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Item four is consideration of ordinance number 2025-1295-0, an ordinance amending the moderate income housing element of the general plan, amendments June 2025. Reed, it's good to see you. You look very handsome in that vest.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we're updating our moderate income housing plan, and really the substantial changes are at the end of the document where it talks about our strategies. With the page 16, that's where our strategies, for the document begin. And this is an update to comply with the state recording requirements. We've had strategies in the past amended those in this update, but we have to update our timelines. A lot of our timelines are each and all. And so we've been successful in reporting on our strategies at this point. But this helps me in the second quarter of 2023. So this is just kind of a forward-looking strategy of what we're going to work on, and what we'll be doing for the coming months.
Of course, in this plan, you have a lot of, you know, data, and I was kind of troubled by the fact that we're going to be getting older as a population in this county. We need more young people.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, you know, I was at a meeting yesterday, another meeting, and we were talking the switch point about homelessness among our senior population. And sometimes you don't think of that, but we have seniors that are homeless. It's pretty scary as well. So it's an absolute important document. It's also required by state code as well, right?
It is. Yeah. We, you know, a lot of the things that we're focusing on in this current update must be with accessory plans, which are, for us, I try to be able to incentivize developers to, once the premises are inserted, to get more units on the side of the line for the, for the, so that's a lot of it.
And I always have to remind people that our plan is for the unincorporated portions of the county. The municipalities in a political subdivision themselves are required to have their own plan as well. So, very good. Well, any other questions, Commissioner, or?
A comment Reed said, having affordable housing outside their parents' home. Are you saying just like in the yard? I'm taking you very literally. Okay.
Well, it could be in the yard. It could be in the yard, just an accessory.
Eight-man tent.
Yeah. We're hoping to give people an opportunity to buy more starter homes. We'd like to, we'd like to encourage developers to get back to building starter homes. I think that's one of the realists in this community is to change the, to buy starter homes. We want to try to, good job.
I've read it through many times, because I know it's in kind of our realm as the planning, and I appreciate the work you've put into it, and the charts and graphs that back up the reason behind it. So, having said that, item four, a move that we approve, consideration of ordinance number 2025-1295-0.
And I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item five is consideration of ordinance number 2025-1296-0, an ordinance approving vacation of West, not vacation, that's not a vacation, vacation of Carson Circle, a platted right-of-way in Washington County, Utah. Reed?
Thank you. There's slides up on the screen for you to look at. This particular right-of-way is up in the Good Seville State subdivision in Central. And it was a platted right-of-way that the subdivision was built, it was moved, and the landowner, Mr. Eric Charlton, he owns all of the lots in the circle. And so, last month, or I think actually, in fact, February, he mandated the Good Seville State subdivision back on all the lots. And when he was in the planning commission, we talked to him about possibly issuing a permission to take a right-of-way, because we're dealing with, with those access points. And the, kind of the current condition of the ground, the way that circle is currently, it drops off pretty steep. And so we've been insisting for the re-charge type, try to turn around with this stuff. So what we'd like to do is ask for the vacation, and we will still maintain utility placement down Bush Cassidy Trail, the circle itself.
What are the chances that, even though they own all the lots, what are the chances they sell off one of the lots, or?
There's no chance of that. One of the things with mining lots is fortunately, we have seconded, so in time a landowner finds a lot, that's where, that's where it's, it's the second possibility of going for a lot.
So he's not only combining the circle into all of those lots, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. The way that.
The way it's drawn.
Yeah, the way it's drawn, it's just.
All the lots have been combined.
Okay.
So it's one lot. And now he's just.
So even though we're seeing partial numbers, they don't really exist.
They don't, yeah.
How does he access his property? Is he going to access it from that same point?
He actually accesses it from the north, from Harden Trail. That's where his driveway is.
So does he own the corner lot, too?
Yeah, he owns the corner lot on Bush Cassidy and Harden Trail. That's where his driveway comes in, and then he owns the 2005.
Is his house the one that faces Harden Trail, or is it, is that the neighbor's? His sits in the back there, right?
His is actually kind of kitty-corner. You can see it's got a green roof.
The green roof, yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. Well, good. Well, very good. Well, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2025-1296-0, an ordinance approving vacation of West Carson Circle, a platted right-of-way in Washington County, Utah. Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Reed. Item six is consideration of resolution number R-2025-3515, a resolution approving the execution of an inter-local cooperation agreement for election services between Washington County and Southwestern Special Service District. Jenna, it's good to see you.
It's good. This is our last, our local, this is for all my.
Wow. Wow. Congratulations. You should throw some sort of party for rounding these all up, so. Very good. Well, this is just, what cycle are they on, the Southwest Special Service District? They're what?
Right now, they're.
Municipal, okay.
Good. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consideration of resolution number R-2025-33, sorry, 3515, approving the execution of an interlocal agreement for election services between Washington County and the Southwestern Special Service Districts.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Jenna. Item seven is consideration of resolution R-2025-3516, a resolution appropriating funding for Sunrise Engineering Proposal to Provide Professional Design Services for Phase Two of the Zion Sewer Extension Project, subject to attorney review. Reed?
Yeah, so you're familiar with the Zion Sewer Line Extension Project. So Phase One of that project, completed, engineering and design, the construction contract is currently out for bid, hoping to have that first phase constructed by the end of this year. So this proposal is to give Sunrise the green light to begin the design and planning for phases for Phase Two of the project. Now, initially, the project was going to be split up between three phases. We decided for efficiency's sake, it'll make more sense if we do, especially with the planning and the design portions all in one phase. So this would be the design from the grado all the way up to the temporary center. It will be $631,800. County would pay for those invoices to Sunrise, but then we submit it for reimbursement to the state through $11 million paid for.
Very good, very good.
Please, a couple of quick questions. You may know the document forwards and backwards, and I'm hoping that you do, but there's two phases in there where it says, if the park service doesn't do this, the engineer will have to do it. That implies to me that the park service will just say, no, we're not doing that.
The park service is pretty motivated. It is, you know, accomplished, maybe, for a little bit.
The one that I was worried about is on page five, where it says, if not provided by the National Park Service, then the engineers will prepare a biological survey report and biological assessment. Are you nervous that the park won't do that?
No, we're not, especially this project. The park is desperate. They're, the sewer line gone, they're tired of paying $300,000 every month for porta-potties.
So how much they're paying, porta-potty pumping?
Yep.
You know, that's, that's the federal government work for you, right?
Yeah.
Spend years and years paying $300,000 a month rather than building a pipe. Okay. Well, I'm glad that we can help out our federal government, so. They do need help. So with that, Mr. Fellow Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion that we would adopt resolution R-2025-3516, resolution appropriating funding for Sunrise Engineering Proposal, as we have spoken about. So that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion as second on item seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we would note that that motion and that contract is based, is subject to attorney review. Item eight is consideration of resolution R-2025-3517, a resolution approving a contract with IMA Inc. for Health and Welfare Benefit Plan Strategy Consulting. And our very own Joel Tucker is here.
Yes, sir. We've been working with NFP for the last several years, and it's been great. They've lost a few of their key contributors. They had a few consultants that went to IMA, and then their account manager, our account manager, went to IMA. And as we look at the two organizations, we think that IMA would probably be a better organization for us if we look that direction. We can see significant savings in the annual contract prices. We can see significant savings in our pharmacy benefits, how much they're putting in that area. And we feel like the expertise level from our original consultants is high. We'd like to go up a little. Aeon, in the past year or so, there's the oversight, they bought out, NFP, they're publicly traded. This new IMA is not publicly traded, they're privately owned, 75% of it is for you. And they are the third largest independently unbenefited consulting firm in the country. So still big, still supportive, but because they're independently owned, they can give more support in their customer service, or their fantasy security.
Yeah. When is this going to take place?
It starts July 1st.
Okay. So this, this is kind of a quick, a lot of times we do it in the fall if we do it, right? So you're kind of.
Well, we want to be able to do it over the moment in October, November time period. So it's better to do it now, so we're all on board and ready to go by the time they can go to this. So then in January, coming around, we're, we're smooth sailing.
Well, the point in all of this work has been that we know health insurance and benefits are going up. are going up, but if we can still continue to be flexible and find savings for our employees, then either the county's share or their share, although still painful, is less painful by continuing to look at the market and see who's going to give us the best deal. So I'll move that we approve item eight, consideration of this resolution of R-2025-3517, approving a contract with IMA Inc. for Health and Welfare Benefit Plan Strategic Consulting.
And I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Joel. Item nine is consideration of resolution R-2025-3518, a resolution approving agreement with the town of Colorado City for housing inmates at the Purgatory Correction Facility. Victoria?
Yes, this is an intergovernmental agreement authorized under Utah and Arizona law. It would terminate the old inmate housing agreement for Colorado City to house inmates at our Purgatory Correctional Facility. There's a rate per day for the new housing agreement and the town's law enforcement officers are given the ability to book inmates and interview inmates at the purgatory facility and share records with our facility and theirs and their police department. Washington County will also bill for nonroutine medical care and other care. And there, this is approximately a five-year agreement, a bit less with possible automatic renewals up to five years.
I just have one question. Are we, have we had this contract before? Is this some, we're just kind of redoing it, right?
Yes.
So every five years.
It just was redrafted at a newer rate and better provisions, plus indemnity provisions for both entities, Colorado City and for the county.
Very good. Because Kingman is an awful long ways.
Yes, it is.
From Colorado City when they need to hold somebody. Well, with that, I will go ahead, Commissioner O'Quinn, did you have any comments?
Sure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution R-2025-3518, a resolution approving an agreement with the town of Colorado City for housing inmates at Purgatory Correctional Facility. And I just find that interesting, the town, it should be the city of Colorado City, but I guess there's still a town in definition over there, so. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion and not the conversation about town, basically.
Yeah, yeah. I'll quit being as chatty when I make the motions. Very good. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 10 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3519, a resolution approving a contract with Horox Engineering LLC regarding the federal aid agreement for local agency projects between UDOT and Washington County regarding the Gunlock Road Project. Todd Evans?
This is the engineering department of the federal aid agreement that we previously passed. It's a $2.1 million project for safety. We've chosen Horox Engineering to be our consultant, if that's possible, we'd like to get that approved. Their contract for engineering, the contract documents, the construction management is $185,000. We're asking for that.
So the contract is for the engineering, basically they go out, identify the safety concerns, and then make those recommendations back to us.
They did a, a safety study for us when we were doing the application for the grant. So they're aware, we're aware of what the safety considers, not to let the construction grounds, they're prioritizing and get the best cost for it. But we can't do everything, but we're, we'll do it up to that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3519, a resolution approving a contract with Horox Engineers LLC regarding the federal aid agreement for a local agency project between UDOT and Washington County regarding the Gunlock Road Project.
We have a, I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our next item is consideration of resolution R-2025-3520, a resolution approving the council of governments recommendations. Todd?
There was only one request on this and it was advanced with positive recommendation for you to approve $156,000 from the preservation fund to pay for the alignment study for the Western Corridor within San Francisco Station. So it's the Western Corridor and get the best alignment, take the car to start.
Very good. Any questions?
Nope.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Nope.
I think it's important to kind of nail that down. With that, I'll make a motion that we adopt item 11, which is resolution R-2025-3520, approving the recommendations from the council of governments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it. And item 13 is consideration of res, let's see, we, oh, we have one more for you, Todd. You were standing there and I was thinking we were on to Leslie and I was thinking, well, this is getting awkward, Todd. Leslie's going to come up in a minute, but this is, this is good. Okay, thank you.
Glad you put them all together.
Okay. Why don't you just go ahead and we'll move on to item 12 there. Colob Terrace Road.
This is for Colob Terrace Road. Last year we did a study that looked at the condition of the road and what we could do to improve it and make it better. Right now, we have to lower limit during this spring because of this false park. So this is doing the upper 5.33 miles of road and this is a engineering agreement that we have to improve for full body engineering, community engineering, and we look to get bid and order what we see. So we don't have to get that much.
So it basically starts at the reservoir and comes down five miles? Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, it comes down until you hit the.
Okay.
It's a, now there's a kind of dark there.
Yep, yep.
You need to remember.
So that'll really take care of most of the areas that we've had concern on roads, right?
Right, right. This, these are the areas that have heavy water, certain surface conditions underneath them. And we get a lot of snowballed up there and it stays for a long time, so it stays there. So this would improve drainage as well as roll nearly existing asphalt up. We've had its base access and that to it, hardened up to three hundred inches pass right up. Should last us a good long time and maybe elevate the road and that's all.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a few years now, it's worth trying to find a fix, so. Well, Commissioner, do you have any thoughts?
No, but I think it would be great for that roadway to not pump so much by putting a solid base underneath it. Chair, I move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3521, a resolution approving an engineering service agreement with Row Value Engineering Inc. for the upper Colob Terrace Road Rehabilitation Pavement Project.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Item 13 and 14 and 15 and 16 are on Leslie. And item 13 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3522, a resolution approving two Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant Agreements for funding Phase Three of Renovant Trail System and Phase Three of Cliff Road Trail System. Leslie?
So the Renovant Trail System is part of the West Mountain Trail System out on Highway 91. And the county has applied for a grant, part of the PLM. It goes a little twist to the other, there's additional control of downed trail. And then our, our Cliff Roads Trail System, formerly called Spring Hollow, which we have about 20 miles of trail, we have 20 miles of trail constructed now and.
How many miles of trail do we have there now?
I think it's 22 now, I think. With the last couple of miles, just we finished two weeks ago.
Super. Where's the ribbon, ribbon trail, sorry.
That is over on Highway 91, just before you hit the Beaver Dam Watch Observation Area.
Okay.
Go up south.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
Nope.
I think it's time for me to get a mountain bike. With that, I'll make a motion that we adopt item 13, consideration of resolution R-2025-3522, resolution approving the two Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant Amendments as been mentioned.
Motion, aye, second.
We have a motion in a second on item 13. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 14 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3533, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the BLM St. George Field Office Designating Washington County as a cooperating agency for the development of SR9 dispersed camping management environmental assessment.
So the BLM is entering into an environmental assessment. They're in speaking right now to change up camping along SR9. This also includes areas up the Colob Terrace Road, it includes out Sheep Ridge Road, and includes some of the Huesbury area as well. And we're developing the formal alternatives here, but this allows us to be a cooperative to save you a lot of camp closures, develop conditions, designate a special camping.
Well, it is needed. Sometimes it looks like a refugee camp up there. So, well, not quite. I mean, they do have, some of them are nice rigs and some of them are.
And now this just affects BLM property, State Trust, with other community.
Yeah, very good.
Mr. Chairman, move on item 14 that we approve resolution number R-2025-3533, approving a memorandum of understanding with the BLM St. George Field Office Designating Washington County as a cooperating agency for the development of the SR9 dispersed camping management environmental assessment.
Very good. I will second that motion. So we have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 15 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3534, a resolution, a resolution approving a professional services agreement for engineering a portion of the Desert Color NICA project. Leslie?
So this agreement is with Sunrise Engineering. We've been working hard to find a place for the Utah High School Psyching Association, which is the high school without bike teams, and they are under the National Response Psyching Association, Response NICA, in particular to potentially hold their state championship, which we have better weather conditions along down here. They used to be here a couple of years ago and then lost their, lost the space they needed to stage such that. So we're working with Desert Color State Trust on a good potential area and this will be to design the access and the staging, part of the pit zones, hard to manage.
Very good. I did have one question. I know we have the next two items deal with this kind of, but we've been working with Desert Color, they've been fantastic as far as supporting the process, but the land is still, School Trust, so we've been working with Aaron and Kyle and those, and will there be a separate agreement?
We've been speaking with them as well. We don't talk to Desert Color without talking to State Trust, we don't talk to State Trust without talking to Desert Color. But we'll, we'll work out if we want to get any understanding.
Very good. Okay.
Yeah, it's a great place. I would hope we'd stay there forever and of course working it out with Desert Color and University and so, yeah. I think this.
That is the purpose of the steps we've taken to develop positions is as well.
Yeah. So NICA is our, for those who might be listening, you know, that's our high school mountain bike. We've been trying to find a course for, right now they use Cedar City, Iron County. Last year, for example, there was snow during the race and so. But we've had several different options and frankly, I'm glad that all of those failed because I have a lot of hope in this one. It's centrally located. I think it'll be great for the riders, it'll be great for people to come and when they're here and they'll be given a lot of use. So I guess good things happen to those that wait or can't find a solution, so.
We were excited. It's not a lot of potential.
It really does. Good job on it, good work.
Plus, it's not just for NICA, it's for all the community.
Well, our, our design initially is to make sure we meet the needs of NICA's standards to, to hold their events, but it will be an event space that could hold any number of mountain bike hiking or outdoor adventures and everything else.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3534, approving a professional services agreement for engineering a portion of the Desert Color NICA project.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 16 is similar, it's consideration of resolution R-25, 2025-3535, a resolution approving a professional service and project management agreement for the Desert Color NICA project. Leslie?
And this agreement is, is the trail house, who was the trail designer for Cliff Roads, not by the system.
Okay, Cliff Roads.
So we've gotten experience with them and they've done a good job. So this in particular is the form agreement with Sunrise is for the access and staging area. This is for trail house to design the trail course, race course itself, and also help establish the all the exit stations as well, which we hope that this particular trail system, which will be about six or seven miles, hopefully through up to the future, will be just one part of a bigger development for other things NICA does right now.
That's fantastic.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I'm the chairman. You're the member. Do you want to make a motion here?
Well, I just don't feel like I should make all of them, so I know you interacted a few.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we pass item 16, which is consideration of resolution R-2025-3535, a resolution approving a professional service and project management agreement for the Desert Color NICA project with Trail House. And that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 17 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3536, a resolution approving an adjustment of 2025 property taxes for a parcel owned by World Senior Games Inc., a Utah nonprofit corporation. And we have our very own Brian Sullivan, who will be speaking on Thursday.
Yes.
It's Thursday, right? At lunch.
No.
At Avian.
We're not advertising. Hey, this item before you is World Senior Games, some of World Senior Games purchased a building last year. They then got a building permit last year to remodel the interior. They would have qualified for an exemption, but they thought that they did not qualify because they had not started using the building yet. But there's a provision in the law that allows that if you have a building active building permit, it would be towards giving it to a usable state for your charitable purpose. So they did miss the deadline, so the only avenue they really had at this point was through this code section 1347.
Yep.
So that's, I guess your decision to make, this commission.
But they would qualify.
They would have if they would have.
The abnormal route legal requirement is that the commission find this is in the best interest of the people in the county and the human interest of the county and state are served.
Okay. Which is on the back page of the same document, so, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve. Which is on the back page of the same document, so, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3536, a resolution approving an adjustment of the 2025 property taxes for a parcel owned by World Senior Games, Inc., a Utah nonprofit corporation in conjunction with Utah Code Annotated 59-2-1347, and on parcel number SG-TCCS-103.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 18 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3537, a resolution approving a professional design service agreement with Spectrum Engineers for AV design for the Justice Court Building. Nicole Felshaw?
Commissioners, thank you. So we are currently in the remodel phase of our boulevard building for the federal courts and the justice court that will reside in the basement. Spectrum Engineering has done the AV design for the federal courts, and we were in need of AV design for the three courtrooms in the justice court. So we got in touch with Spectrum Engineers, and they've put a proposal together to do those three courtrooms, and they are very familiar with federal courts and state courts, and I have that in front of you today for consideration.
Very good. Now, my only request, it has that slight ringing that we've been hearing today, that that be included. I don't know if that's an extra fee or something.
It might be an extra fee, or we might get lucky and that not happen in the courtrooms.
Very good. Well, with, with that, I might get my mic turned off, but...
Can I also make one, just, just so that complete transparency, because Spectrum Engineers is also doing the federal courts, generally speaking, this kind of a contract goes directly to the architect, and they pair up because they're working so closely with the architect, but they were afraid of a conflict of interest, so that's why we're going to hold the contract and then kind of be the middleman between the architect and Spectrum to get the job done. Just a little bit of variance, but it was the way that we could secure them for this building.
Very good. Well, with that, I make a motion that we adopt item 18, consideration of resolution R-2025-3537, a resolution approving a professional design service agreement with Spectrum Engineering for AV design for the Justice Court Building.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, our motion passes. Item 19 is consideration of resolution R-2025-3538, a resolution accepting and selecting the RFP proposal prepared by Norris Design and Prefort Complex Design for Legacy Park Master Plan. Nicole Felshaw?
Yes, Commissioner. So Legacy Park, as you're aware, is a 14,000 acre multi-use event that hosts the fair, e-coin services, or activities, sports, concerts, it, the range goes on and on. So we feel like Legacy Park has aged quite a bit, and there's significant facility needs to meet both the growing demand and improve the current infrastructure. And we posted a request for proposal for a feasibility study and master plan, wherein Norris and Prefort Complex Designs provided us a proposal. They have both expertise and the experience. We, I have talked to them on a Zoom call and was very impressed with Prefort, and there is the contract in front of you, the proposal in front of you today, to consider approval so that we can start the master planning of Legacy Park. And as you're aware, we also have electrical issues in some of the areas, some straight storm drain issues, and when it comes to the equestrian in the future, there's nothing better than maybe really looking at the entire complex, what the needs might be in the future, and then phasing that in so that we feel like we have a real good design to work towards a better Legacy Park.
Very good. Well, we are looking forward to this. We've had quite a bit of discussion with, with a variety of producers, users, citizens in regards to legacy, and I'm actually really excited about this, so thank you for your good work on that, Nicole, on pulling these two RFPs together. And what we found in our discussion is there's not like a plethora of firms that do engineering on, on equestrian parks, and so...
Or we just met experience.
Yeah, so, so both of them seem to be very qualified, and Prefort seemed to have a large catalog of work, if you will, and they're very well-known in the industry.
One of the things that Prefort asked is if we had a preference, whether Norris or Prefort took the, you know, the lead. I told him more than likely, since I've spoken with Prefort, that we would appreciate them taking the lead, but nonetheless, I explained that if they do their job correctly, we won't know, because it'll just be seamless.
Yeah, right. And I think the public should know too, as we've discussed this, and trying to find out what's best for legacy, that we've asked those companies that looked at it, in particular at this, Prefort, that they would involve the community, and they put that in their cover letter in the second paragraph, that they would have their project management and their collaboration team work together to generate community support, and we'd bet wise, every community's a little different, and so we would hope they would do that. And then we've also expressed that we would hope they would expedite this, and that that should be a continued theme. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3538, accepting and selecting the RFP proposal prepared by Norris Design and Prefort Complex Design for the Legacy Park Master Plan.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. That concludes our regular agenda. I'd just like to remind everybody that meetings are rebroadcast daily on TDS cable channels 22 and 108, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you. Good job.